Call this meeting to order, the Rockledge City Council Regular Meeting, Wednesday, August 15th, 2018, and it is 6:00 PM. City Clerk, you want to call the roll, please?
Mayor Price.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Ferguson is absent and excused. Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Forrester.
Here.
Councilman Daskey.
Here.
Councilman Hartzell.
Here.
City Attorney Maniclier.
Here.
City Manager Fettro.
Here.
Okay, please stand for invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please bow your heads. Our Father in Heaven, we ask to bless the city and all of its residents. We ask of your wisdom and guidance to conduct ourselves as servants to all the citizens of Rockledge. We ask you to watch over our troops abroad and give them courage and hope. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to introduce Joe Sargent with Troop 224 of the Boy Scouts. He's going to lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Okay, the council has before them the minutes of the regular meeting, July 18th, 2018, and the City Council Budget Workshop of August 1st.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on July 18th and the Council Budget Workshop on August 1st.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose the same sign. Motion carries. Presentations. Let me come down for presentations. Because if this goes off, I'm going to get mad. How about the Sharing Center of Central Bovard? Are they here?
Yeah.
Are you the only one here, Larry?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Steve? Who else do we have here from the committee? Anybody from the committee? Come on down.
For those of you in the audience, we have an employee golf tournament every single year that we have in June. And all the money, we pick a recipient throughout the county, somebody in the county that we donate this money to. And the one this year was the Sharing Center of Central Bovard. And the amount, and we call it the Connie Cup. It was named after one of our past employees. And this year, the City of Rockledge employees raised $20,500.
Thank you. Well, my name's Debra Baker. I'm the President and CEO of the Sharing Center located in Cocoa, just a few minutes down the road. When we were informed that we were going to be the recipients of this year's golf tournament, I was really excited to see the City of Rockledge and their employees. And let's emphasize that, and how hard they work. And during the prayer, you mentioned servants to the community. This speaks volumes. This money will go help us buy food this year. Today alone, we had over 150 people show for lunch. We had over 75 people come and ask us for emergency food. We had showers today. We had health and hygiene kits given, and we were delivering weekend food already in the school year through the local schools, of which Emma Jewell and Golf U participate in that program as well. So, we're here. We're celebrating our 40th year this year. Again, so stoked to be able to be here. These gifts don't come to us often, and we surely cannot say thank you enough. Mayor, I'm glad to see you're upright, because at the tournament, I know that you came out that day and made a great effort to be there and make that showing and support us. And so, again, to the City Council, to the supporting staff. Brenda and Mayor, again, thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. This really blows me away. I told Brenda, I said, "I hope I don't cry when you guys kind of give it to me," because, again, it's not easy being a 501(c)(3). There's a lot of great 501(c)(3) charities in this community, and they're all deserving. And so, for us to be highlighted this year, I just can't say those two words thank you enough. And again, thank you to the employees of the great City of Rockledge for this love and caring gift. So, thank you, Mayor.
Since you're now a part of the Rockledge family, I'm going to present you with the Mayor's pen.
Well, I will be glad to wear that honorably.
Anytime Steve Wilson or any city employee sees you around Rockledge, you better have that pen on.
Amen. Amen. Heard that, Steve, right? And God bless you all. Thank you so much again. Thank you.
Okay, our Volunteer of the Year, Dan Hen. Come on up, Dan. Now, Dan was not at our breakfast that we had this year, our Volunteer Breakfast. And usually, that's where we present these. So, we wanted to certainly recognize you in front of the City Council and the residents as well. But Dan is our Volunteer of the Year for 2017. In recognition as a volunteer on the Business Development Committee for the past five years and your past service on the Community Redevelopment Agency Board, your willingness to always assist when needed reflects the character of Rockledge. Your spirit of volunteerism has helped to make Rockledge an even better community. You have provided selfless leadership and have always been there when service was needed to get the job done. And as such, we recognize you as Volunteer of the Year, presented at the 21st Annual Volunteer Appreciation Breakfast hosted by the Rockledge City Council, June 16th, 2018. Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much.
So, do I get to talk like five minutes like David did two?
Three.
Three minutes? Oh, okay. Sorry. No, I just, you know, obviously, I do what I do not for the thanks. You know, I appreciate giving back to the city and everything that I do. And I thank you guys as well for, you know, the thankless job sometimes that you guys have. So, I totally understand and appreciate this, and thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Have I presented you with a pen, being on the board?
No, I have not.
You have not? Well, that's my fault. I apologize. You now have your Mayor's pen, and you have a very special challenge coin for being the Volunteer of the Year. So, always have that with you. You might get challenged by one of the City Councilmen when they see you next time.
Okay. I know that one.
Can we recognize your family? Can you introduce your family, please?
Sure. Sure.
Come on up. All of you.
This is their favorite part.
We're not trying to embarrass you.
I have my wife, Kristy.
Hi, Kristy.
We just celebrated 24 years of marriage this past week. Brooke and Annabelle is our recent additions.
Annabelle. Hi, Annabelle. Well, let's come out here and have a picture of the whole family, okay? Our next certificate of commendation, we're going to recognize Jeffrey Higibothan. Come on up. Councilman, you want to come down? I don't know. I think there's only two of us now in the City Council who went to Rockledge High School, right? Who's the third one? Sean. Sean's not here. Anna County Commissioner. But we did go to Rockledge High as well. But anyway, let me present you a certificate of commendation presented to Jeffrey Higibothan from Rockledge High School. On behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Rockledge, it is indeed a pleasure to congratulate you on being awarded the Space Coast Science Education Alliance 2018 Exceptionary Science Teacher of the Year, presented at the regular meeting of the Rockledge City Council held August 15th, 2018. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilman, I'd like to make a presentation to you as well.
As the Mayor talked, we have something called a challenge coin. I'd like to give you a City of Rockledge challenge coin. So, next time I get a chance to see you, I hope you have it with you. Otherwise, we'll be heading out for a drink. I think that's the way it works.
You got some answer?
I hope. I attended the conference and represented for the county and state of the societies, and he was a standout. And his award was a Triceratops fossil. Thank you.
I don't think anybody mentioned that the Principal of Rockledge High School is here also. Mr. Merrill.
I did not. No, we have a new principal.
We have a new principal. Would you like to come up here for just a second? Because I just happen to have another coin in my pocket, so I could catch you. Congratulations for joining the Rockledge team.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Welcome to Rockledge.
Thank you.
And I guess I'd heard, but I did not realize you were the new principal. I apologize for not recognizing you.
No, no, that's okay. I'm just here to support a phenomenal educator, so definitely about him, not about me.
And I asked him if he'd come so I could show him who's here.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate you.
Now, when I come visit Rockledge High School, I expect this. Really? I didn't know. Alrighty. What's the pleasure to counsel on the financial report?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Commissioner Barfield, come up. I'm sorry, I'm trying to skip your most important guy out here in the audience. Come up, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwomen, Councilmen, it's great to see you all again. It's back at home, you know, in Rockledge. I just want to come forward and give you updates of what's going on in the county. I know one of the big things is that we are working towards EOC, Emergency Operations Center, as progressing. Design has been done. We know, we thank you all for working with us on the property and the infrastructure and all that. We're looking at ways to finance down the road. We think we may have some viable methods to do that. Be kind of creative, but we're really pretty positive we're going to be able to get on that next year, and that will be good. If we can get that in place, it'll be, it's very much needed. So, thanks for working with us on that. As far as the county's going right now, we're going through budget, I think as everybody is. We experienced a lot more new construction, so we've come out about $3 to $4 million ahead. We're putting that into infrastructure, also putting it into people, trying to bring salaries up, and trying to keep people working instead of going to other places. So, all that's going on, it's, things look positive. The county's economy is booming. We've got a number of hotels going in. We have UTSSA, who is just amazing the amount of people that's bringing in. It's much more than was ever anticipated. We cannot build hotels fast enough, and, which is a good thing to have. It's good clean sports. It's amazing. With the new soccer fields, those are, soccer fields and football, it makes a major difference too in the youth sports. We are looking at putting more money into the parks, trying to fix some of them. There's been a lot of issues as far as hurricane damage. That's, it's been tough getting all those done. We've got contracts out now, as long as we can get people to do them. And we should be finishing docks and boat ramps. Some of those should be within the next three months to four months. We should see some movement on that. Pretty much, that's the updates I can give you that I know of. But I want just, from a personal standpoint, I want you all to know that it's, I'm coming on the last lap here of my term as the County Commissioner, and it's been an honor serving you all. It really has. I've enjoyed it, and it's, I still think this is the best city in the county, but I'm kind of prejudiced. But it's been great. We've got a lot of things accomplished. And most importantly, I want to thank you all for your service, because this is where the rubber meets the road. It's at the city level and the county level, and you can see, when you come in this city, you can see the love for this county, in the city. You can see people, how it works, how people get along, and that's home to me. Also, from a personal standpoint, the reason I'm not running is because I think everyone knows my company, who's Rockledge-based, is growing substantially. We once a massive contract, and just to give you an example, on August 1st, we started 200 people at Camp Lejeune. By October 1st, we were looking at probably 1,000 people around the country starting. And then, by this time next year, we could be over 3,000 people. I cannot do a county commission and do that and run a campaign. I could, but I would come home to an empty house, I'm afraid. But with that, I brought a little gift for you all. I know you've got your coins and you've got your pens. Well, I got something too, so.
Okay.
This is a memorable coin that I have made, and it's only due a month. And disclaimer, this is paid by private money, my money, not by the county or tax burden. I'll give each one of you all one of these. So, cheers.
Thank you, Jim. Very nice.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate your service, too. Okay, now, let's get to the financial report. What's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to be in receipt of the financial budget report for the month of July 2018.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Are there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries. Number seven, public hearings, ordinances, resolutions. We have a resolution honoring 50 years of home rule in Florida. And I need somebody to offer the resolution.
I'll offer the resolution honoring 50 years of home rule in Florida and move to read it by title only.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Rockledge, Bovard County, Florida, honoring 50 years of municipal home rule in the Florida Constitution and committing to provide an educational initiative to help all Floridians understand this beneficial right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'll move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries. Let's move on to number eight, reports from boards and committees, planning commission, recommendation. Go ahead, Mr. Daskey.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, move to be in receipt of the minutes of the following meeting, planning commission minutes of meeting on August 7th, 2018, and consider independently any recommendations contained therein.
Second.
Motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Okay, we're passing something down here. We're going to have our first recommendation is preliminary subdivision plat Hancock's Peace of Heaven rezoning from R2 to PUD. Alex, you want to just give us a little short one on this one?
Sure. So, this is actually a plat. It's not a rezoning. It's still going to stay R2. And basically, what you have is the subdivision was originally platted over 100 years ago. When it was platted, the lots ran north and south, I mean, they ran.
East and west.
East and west. And in order to make a conforming lot, they are now going to replat and make two lots that run north and south. And they're able to do that because they're on a corner. So, that will make Lot 1 conforming, and that will give them Lot 2, which is conforming, but they have to go through the replat process.
What is that track A?
What?
What is that track A?
That track is a landscape track, so it's not a corner lot.
Oh, that's smart. Okay. Anybody have any questions? What's the recommendation of the Planning Commission? Was to approve this?
Yes.
Is anybody here from that, that owns that lot?
I don't think the Hancock's are here this evening. They are caring for their elderly father, which is why they want to build the house next door.
They plan on building something soon?
Yeah.
Good. Okay. What's the pleasure to counsel? Unless anybody has any questions of Alex? See none?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'll move to accept the recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second to accept the recommendation. Do we have any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, and our reappointments. Reappointments, none. Appointments, one for business development. Who's going to give me that one?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
If I could, before we do that, if I could ask a question of the City Manager, I noticed this applicant does not live in Rockledge. Is that a, an issue with this?
Deputy Mayor, I'd ask the clerk to respond.
City Clerk.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Forrester, the ordinance that provided for the establishment of the Business Development Committee provides that as long as the individual has a business interest in or owns a business in Rockledge, it is acceptable.
Okay. I'm good then.
Okay, I know Ronald Ramsey's in the audience, the only person that we have here. Right? Okay, what's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Move to appoint Ronald Ramsey by acclamation to the Business Development Committee.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries. Welcome. Thank you. Appreciate your service.
Congratulations.
Unfinished business, non-consent business. Mr. Daskey.
Yes, sir. Move for the approval of these consent business items. The first one is purchase of four 2019 Ford police vehicles for the Public Safety Department. Second one, annual hardware and software maintenance service agreement for SCADA system, ROTA controls for the wastewater department. Third is the travel authorization to the Florida League of Cities Legislative Policy Committee meetings, September 14th and October 12th, 2018, for Councilman Hartzell. And lastly, is the renewal of street sweeping services contract, USA Services for Public Works Department.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. This is consent business. There is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries. New business, discussion action item, travel authorization for Florida League of Cities Annual Legislative Conference, November 15th and 16th, 2018. Kissimmee, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to mention that if approved, please counsel let me know, hopefully, probably within the next week or so, so we can start to make reservations and so forth. I know Councilman Hartzell, Dr. Ferguson, and if approved, the City Manager would like to attend, but any others of you, please, please let me know.
How long do I have to get with you?
Let's say by a week from Friday, if we could.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the travel authorization for Councilman Hartzell, City Manager Fettro, and any other council members that let her know that they want to go to attend the Florida League of Cities Legislative Conference on November 15th and 16th, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Okay, petitions for monsters and communications. At this time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to their City Council about anything to do with the City of Rockledge? It's your turn to come forward. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to their City Council? Okay, let's move on. Report, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few items tonight. One is to update counsel. You recall a meeting or two ago, actually, an ice cream store called Brewster's had made an offer on the property directly south of us. That was for .6 acres at $219,000. This morning, either yesterday morning, this morning, he emailed and asked if the city might consider an offer of $249,000 for .75 of an acre. Now, I would tell you that the property appraised for the .75 of an acre, it appraised at $275,000. And as you know, cities and counties, we really should get the appraised value. Something that governments should really do. So, anyway, so I wanted to bring that to you all and get your direction as to, should I accept the offer, or should I just come back with the .75 at the appraised value of $275,000, or some iteration in between, whatever counsel's direction is. So, I'm here for your direction, please.
Anybody have anything? I mean, I have my own opinion, but.
I kind of do. Dr. Fettro, the whole one acre was appraised at how much?
The 1.01 acres was appraised at $365,000.
So, to me, that shows the value that a bigger parcel is worth more than a couple of smaller parcels. So, I would recommend that we not sell for less than the appraised value, because we're going to end up with a quarter acre lot that it's not worth the remaining $100,000 if we sold the whole parcel. So, we're already going to be taking a beating from that aspect on it. And, I mean, I'd love to see the business, but I just, I don't think we can take a beating on the market value.
My contention is, once we accept something lower than our appraisal, that now becomes a comparable sale, and we shoot ourselves in the foot, in my opinion, because we take less than what it's going to appraise for next time, because they're going to use our sale as a comparable. And that hurts us. But I don't think it should be sold for 249, and I think that we should give some leeway to the City Manager to negotiate something closer to our appraised value of 275. That's my opinion. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman. I was kind of thinking the same lines as both you and Mr. Forrester. I would say you don't want to go, absolutely no to the 249. But if he came in, if the appraised value is 275, and he came in at 270 or 272, maybe, you know, I think there's some room there to negotiate slightly, but very, very small.
I can go along with that. When it came up, I asked the question because the .6 was appraised to 252, I believe. And it was, we were negotiating at 219.
Well, the .6 was, the two iterations of appraisal that the city got was at 1.01 acres at 365, and then .75 of an acre at the 275.
Okay. And when we were talking about the .6 acre at 219.
He did the math to sort of extrapolate out at a .6 of.
Okay.
Yeah.
My problem with that extrapolation is it doesn't apply, because a bigger lot is worth more than two or three small lots.
Understood. Understood.
So, I, I could live with a slight, you know, uh, thing, but, uh, we gotta get a lot closer than what he's offering right now.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so.
Since this may become a, a sale of property, an illegal item, I think, Mr. City Attorney, would we like a motion just so I have clear direction on the record? Is it okay just for consensus?
If the council was, first off, your responsibilities are to be the good stewards of the property for the entire city of Rockledge. With that in mind, uh, when we sell property, uh, you get an appraised value. Uh, at that point, you're under the gun to get, sell it for less. You, you, because you do two things when you do that. First, you set a comparable sale, which in the appraisal business, uh, can be used for about six months as to valuation on that kind of property. So, you're driving down the property value of other parcels within the, within the city. Secondly, uh, you set a very bad precedent, uh, for the people who would, might want to do business to purchase property from the city because they're gonna try and lowball you. And it sets a very bad precedent to do it. Now, to negotiate back and forth, a couple thousand dollars off to 275, that's, that's de minimis. Uh, you, you could, you could do that and still with good faith, do what you're supposed to be doing. Um, but, uh, the 249 is, um, it sounds like somebody's trying to negotiate with you the hard way.
I don't blame him. So, uh, basically, if we make a motion, we just make a motion that we will not accept the 249. I don't think we need to put anything else in a motion because we don't want to give our, give our hand out there.
Understood. Just authorize a city manager or something based on?
You're gonna get a motion?
No motion?
I'm questioning if we need a motion.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
I mean, I'm thinking we've given the city manager guidance here and she can go forth with that.
Okay.
The, the person has put in an offer and therefore we need to, the, the offer will expire after a certain period of time on its own weight. However, if you want to get things moving along, you just make a motion to, uh, turn down or, or not accept the, uh, the 249 or whatever.
I'll make a motion to turn down the offer for 249 and for the city manager to, uh, continue negotiations with the guidance that she's received.
Second.
Good motion. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Everybody understand what we're doing here?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, second item is just to proudly announce that the annual Public Safety Academy begins Thursday, September 27th. This, this is a six-week program and it consists of six Thursday sessions and three Saturday sessions. Thursdays are about 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Saturdays are 9:00 to 5:00. And if any council member or spouse wishes to participate, please see Chief Lasada for an application. So, we just want to make sure y'all have those dates and that it's coming up. And lastly, if Chief could take a moment, if Mayor and Council would allow, he has someone he wants to introduce y'all to. Chief?
Mayor, Council. Madam, City Manager, thank you for giving me a minute. I'd like to proudly introduce to you Sebastian Lippert. Sebastian is a German policeman and he's here on an internship with the Rockledge Public Safety Department for three weeks. Uh, during that time, he's gonna be doing a full FTO program, um, immersing himself into the nuances of American policing. He's already seen some, some great differences between Germany and American policing already. Uh, but with that said, it's a three-year police academy in Germany.
Mm-hmm.
He is two and a half years through. And after he graduates, he's aspiring to be a helicopter pilot for the, for the Polizei over there. Uh, he's from Sachsen-Anhalt. They serve about 2.6 million people and they have about 2,600 officers. So, he's one of many. And Sebastian would like to say a few words?
I won't, uh, need this situation, um, to say thanks for all the police and the other ones. Also friendly to me, so helpful. It's really nice. And especially, uh, thanks to Chief Lasada for stay by him and all the time. It's, it's so, so nice. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sebastian.
You'll be seeing him throughout the city for the next three weeks.
Look forward to seeing some more of you out there. All right, uh, somebody give me a motion for the City Attorney litigation report.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Move to be in, uh, receipt of the City Attorney litigation report dated August 1st, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Joe?
I, I feel rather embarrassed to call a one-page document with two cases onto the litigation.
I don't. I remember it was four and five pages.
Yep, and more, but, uh, yeah. Um, the, the Horn case, uh, that we're just, it's, it's a PI case. The league is handling. Uh, not a lot has been going on. I'm just in the case to get any of the pleadings and let you know what's happening. Uh, our good friends, uh, in the, my, my old friend, uh, which hopefully we're gonna be able to start getting rid of. Um, that's the only thing that we've got left to do. And, um, go Sox.
Okay. All right, reports from Nadya. City Clerk?
I would just like to say that I was fortunate enough to participate in the last, uh, Public Safety Academy, so I would highly recommend it for anybody on council. It was a great experience.
City Attorney, you okay?
Yes.
Councilman Hartzell?
Um, I'll just let you know, I'm departing for the Florida League of Cities Conference, uh, tomorrow, uh, at morning. And, uh, I'll tend to bring back a pretty good report.
All right.
Um, also, uh, I attended the ethics briefing on August 8th, uh, four hours. I think I, I've still got dead spots down here that, from sitting so long. Um, but there were a couple of things here that were of interest and I'll try to, uh, bring back some clarification on those. And, uh, let's see. Summer's good. School has started. Darn.
How long do you have off? Couple of weeks?
That's, no. School started this about, Monday. Monday morning, Monday night, Tuesday morning, Tuesday night, Wednesday morning. A very tight schedule.
Good. Keep you busy then.
Yep. I can't get in trouble with that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Martin?
Um, I do have a few things. Uh, we did attend, a few of us attended the League of Cities meeting on Monday night at the Cocoa Beach Country Club. Um, I also wanted to inquire about, um, I noticed that in the, I think, July 15th meeting that I did not attend, we approved, uh, suspending the printing of the budget documents. And I wanted to suggest, uh, that we maybe double-side our agendas and some of our documents to lessen.
We have done that before. How come we don't do that anymore?
The agendas typically are double-sided. However, there was a problem with the new copier and it would not punch the holes. So, this one happens to be single-sided, but typically they are double-sided.
Okay. And some of our other documents, it would lessen some of our paper distribution. Um, again, I always, I want to commend, um, Dr. Fettro for any citizen concerns that I have. She immediately addresses them and appreciate Chief Lasada and Public Works, Public Works as well for recent citizen concerns. And I do want to acknowledge my oldest daughter, Dr. Samanthaia Martin. Um, this is her first council meeting since I've been in office and I appreciate her being here with me this evening.
Is she one of the twins?
No, she's the oldest.
The oldest?
The twins are the youngest.
Great. Thank you for coming. Dr. Smith?
I pass, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Daskey?
I have a couple of things. Um, one, I am extremely disappointed that I missed the push-in ceremony of the new fire truck.
I bet you are.
Um, from the pictures I seen, the videos I seen, uh, it, it was definitely, uh, a tremendous, uh, uh, thing to see. And I wished I could have been there, but I was at a wedding in Pennsylvania. So, um, two other items, just quickly. I, I know today, uh, you probably got your invitation to the, um, September 11th, uh, Remembrance Ceremony. So, please mark your calendars. Please attend if you can. Uh, we'll be having probably one, maybe two final meetings before, before then to put everything together. Uh, the last thing I have, and, and this is just kind of on a personal note, um, my Rotary Club, uh, which I don't talk about a lot here, but, uh, my Rotary Club, um, has guest speakers every time we have a, a meeting. And I was able to secure, uh, Representative Dorothy Hookel to come to our meeting in two weeks. Not, not the one tomorrow, but next week. I'd like to extend that invitation to anyone on the council, uh, or any staff that would want to come, uh, to hear her speak. She's gonna give a legislative update. Please contact me first if you are coming. Uh, but it would be Thursday, the, uh, I'm sorry. Thank you, 23rd. Um, and we meet at, uh, the Twisted Birch at, uh, 7 o'clock AM. Uh, it's an early breakfast meeting, but, uh, if anyone on the council or the city would like to attend, please let me know.
Since you're making invite, do you pay for their breakfast too?
Well, we'll, we'll talk about that. If it's the whole council, no. That, I pass.
Deputy Mayor?
Alex was thinking about that breakfast until she heard 7 o'clock in the morning. She kinda choked up back there. The, uh, the push-in ceremony was great. It was a surprise to me. I'd never heard of a push-in ceremony and had no idea that so many people would attend, but there were, what, over 100 people there.
A lot of people there.
And, um, and it was a lot of fun. And, uh, so, I enjoyed that.
Everybody was asking for Daskey.
I don't know about that, but, but thank you.
And, uh, I think that's all I've got. Oh, I'm gonna be out of town, uh, from this weekend for about 10 days. I'll be back on the, uh, 28th, I think. But, uh, anybody can call me if they need me for anything.
Okay, and you guys missed a good, um, ribbon cutting at the Sushi Factory on South Fitz Boulevard. It's a new restaurant that's come in, it's been there a couple of months, I guess, and, uh, it's very good. They had all the sushi laid out for us to eat and try, and it was very good. So, anybody out there that likes sushi, like, uh, Chief Lasada loves it, I know. We can get him out there.
I haven't tried it, Chief.
Yeah? Well, you had a California roll. That's, that's not sushi. But, uh, we had another open house at the, uh, what's the place called? Brendan? The, where the shakes are at?
Oh, um.
I can't.
Beechey Nutrition. Thanks, Alex.
On, uh, US1, a place you can go and get a meal supplement?
Yeah.
Or meal replacement, I guess they call it. And, uh, it's pretty interesting. All the stuff they have in there that you can put together to have a meal replacement and it's all in a, a shake, some type of a shake. And they have a tea there that you can get the tea that, uh, it's great for weight loss, I guess. Some, some kind of additives in it for weight loss, but, uh...
Maybe we can have that instead of this candy. Put about 10 pounds on me.
Bring that tea up here?
Yeah.
That's probably a good idea.
I just remember feeling different after having that tea, so I wonder what was in it.
Exactly. So, uh, we got a lot more, um, seems like, uh, since business is so good out there in the city, that, uh, we're getting a lot more of these, uh, ribbon cuttings. Uh, new businesses coming in and they're pretty interesting to, uh, to, um, see what's going on. And I'll give you a little secret agent stuff here for everybody out there. We're actually getting a fried chicken place in Rockledge, but I'm not telling you anything else. All right? Something I've always wanted my whole life in Rockledge was a fried chicken place and we're finally getting one in Rockledge, okay?
Mayor, I did want to ask our plans. Um, certain plans are underway for National Night Out. When, well, can we get some?
It's in October, I think.
It's Tuesday night. Before we know it.
Yeah, Tuesday night, October 2nd. And the plans are well underway. Um, we can certainly get you more information, Councilwoman. It's four to, thank you, four to 7 AM, uh, four to 7 PM. And, um, on Fitz Boulevard, the Latter Day St. Church, yeah.
Tuesday night.
Yeah, Tuesday night, October 2nd.
All right. If there's nothing else before this council, I adjourn at 7:45? 6:45 PM.